Good evening, everyone, and welcome. And for those of you watching at home, thanks for tuning in. Just for the public's information, this meeting will be recorded. Some and/or all parts of the meeting may be used by our local access company to be shown on local access along with Internet feeds. And clips may be used separately from the entire meeting. And I'm going to ask to make sure everyone has their cellphones off. And if you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That other guy is not going to be here tonight, so.
Selectman Kinahan will not be joining us. He is out of the country and will be rejoining us at our next available meeting. Except, first item on the agenda is warrants brought aside from businesses except the minutes for review for February 7th.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes of December 19th, 2017.
Moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to skip C and head right on to our budget hearing. Should we wait till 7:15, David, or do we not have to?
You don't have to. It's not a public hearing.
All right. And with us is the Treasurer Collector to go over his budget. Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Jerry.
I know this is your first time presenting the budget. You're probably familiar with the process, but what we ask you to do is present your budget, but really what we're looking for is to go over any of the line items that have major increases and major decreases. And if they're up or down, either way, if you want to give a brief explanation, and then we can ask questions. This is, if we don't mind, Selectman Marrera, I'd like to hear all the budgets under the budget hearing for 7:15 at the same time, and then we'll take one vote for all of them.
Good.
And we'll ask questions individually. First budget's 1450. Okay, Scott?
All right. The only major decrease is the appointed official. We went from John Duggan, who'd been here 20 years, to myself, so that's down about 20,000. Everything else is pretty level. Next on the list is the Fiscal Clerk. That's Jan. All the SPEA employees in there for two-and-a-half percent raises. The Assistant Treasurer Collector, Maureen, also is getting a step raise this year for her 20th year. And the Delinquent Tax Collector went up a little bit because Gene took over my old spot, and she has a little bit more seniority than me, so she's on a higher step.
Okay, so it seems like any and all changes in this are all contractual, and because of shifting around of staff, there's no individual line items increased.
Right.
Okay. Elton, you have any questions on that?
I have no questions. It's pretty well in line there to explain the $20,000 to prevent it with John Duggan. How was it?
Moving on to 7100.
7100 is the Retirement of Debt. The major increase here is we, back in October, we bonded $5 million that we had on short-term borrowing before, so.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm going to have to find it.
Retirement of Debt, I got it.
Okay. Sorry, can you say that again? It's a 37% increase.
Yep. So, back in October, we bonded $5 million for the school that we had short-term borrowing on before. So that was born in October, so now that's long-term debt. So the increase there is the extra payment on that $5 million that we'll have going forward. The principal school payment will stay the same. The general government payment will stay the same. Next year, it will go down a little bit. And the other numbers will stay in level.
And how many, how much, how many years is on that note there as far as the high school there is left?
The original note was for 25 years. I think this is the fourth year on there, so we have 21 to go. And then the short-term note was 20. Sorry, the one we took out back in October was 20 years.
Scott, do we even exist in, any existing debt from the old building still being paid off?
We do. Yeah.
Is that a, will that come under a?
That's under the Principal School, 5910.
Okay.
There's a high school remodeling, school roofs that we took out back in 2008, and the middle school roof that we did in 2015.
Elton, any further questions on 7100?
No. Whatever.
7510?
So 7510 is?
Right next to the, right next to the last one, Elton.
That's the interest on the long-term debt, and it's the, pretty much the same situation. The interest line is higher because we have that new payment on there. The other lines are level funded.
And all that, the roof goes, is pretty well caught up, right?
Yes.
Roof?
Yep.
Okay.
We, the note we took out last year for 650,000, we didn't end up not using all of it, and John had moved to pay off the whole thing last year, so, short-term borrowing-wise, we cleared up about $1 million in debt between the school and the water department.
Right.
So how's the current interest rate? Are we getting that?
They're going up right now, just across the board, so it's not as good as it was two years ago. But our rating's still good. We'll have another bond rating when we do the golf course.
Right. Okay. And 5720. That is interest on short-term debt.
Yep, that's just one line. It's interest on the bands that we have out there. We just kept that the same amount.
As we, I mean to back up, but they're kind of all caught together. As we're freeing up payments, as we pay things off, are you trying to shift that money to pay stuff off a little bit sooner, or how does that work?
Yes. Any money that we have left over, so we overbudget a little bit just because we don't know what the short-term borrowing interest rates are going to be. So we can take that payment, and depending on if there's any provisions preventing us from paying off the long-term debt earlier, if there's not, then we can go pay that off.
If there's no benefit to paying it off, why pay it off?
Right. So, yeah, we're looking to aggressively pay things down. After next year, we'll only have one more short-term thing out there, so.
As you know, we're all very anxious to try to pay off the new high school without touching the tax rate as much as we can, and obviously, the voluntary meals tax has been huge in helping us accomplish that.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Any questions on those, Elton?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve or pass on to the Finance Committee as presented, 1450, 7100, 7510, 7520.
Ode.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Budget, 2200. That's the Fire Department. Chief, welcome.
You might have new guys tonight, huh?
Yeah.
New victims.
Chief, while we have you here, and before we start, I want to thank you for great cooperation during our snow emergencies. I had the pleasure of spending pretty much most of the day over at the Senior Center, and it was great communication with you and our new Senior Director and the Highway Department and everything, so it's great to see a seamless and flawless transition between you and the old chief and all the other new departments.
Yeah, well, that's good staff right there. We all work well together. Communication is the key.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you. I see the first increases are contractual for the appointed official. Clerical salaries, I increased that anticipation of asking the Board to retitle her position where she was 17 years ago hired as a Senior Secretary. I'd like to retitle her to Head Secretary.
So that request would be coming at a future date?
Right.
So that could go up or down?
Yep. Permanent salaries is contractual, two-and-a-half percent raise, is five-step increases. The Deputy's position is a difference because he's a paramedic. There's a difference in day, contractionally there. And along with, still, I have an Opens Lieutenant's position and a Cap position that needs to be filled, that accounts for the salaries. As far as the overtime recall, injuries stay the same, but basically just added time-and-a-half to that, three-and-three-quarters percent. Same with along with the sick time increase, that just by time-and-a-half of the two-and-a-half percent increase. The holiday and vacation and personal leaves is basically the same. It's every contracting so many hours of vacation time, it's basically, I add them all up and multiply by an average overtime rate, because we fill and maintain four-man shifts, so it's basically everything covered. That was the increase on those.
13.75 seems awful big.
Which?
Under the holiday for that.
Holidays, that, well, it's, every guy gets 12 paid holidays.
Oh, that's, okay.
And everybody, guys, so it's just to fill all those shifts is.
I thought overtime, I thought that was referring to people that worked for Christmas, worked on Christmas.
Oh, no, no, no. Everybody gets 12 paid holidays, and basically.
Just a contractual number that you had to be.
Yeah, it's just the number of hours, days, times there, an average overtime rate for everybody. It's came to a round number.
Right.
The longevity, that came down a little bit because the chief retired, so it's opened up a little bit. The college and educational incentives, more guys turned in, got degrees and credits. So it's a contraction line item, but they get for 30 credits, associate degrees and bachelor's degrees.
The, you know, it's always scary when you look down at the percentages, when dollar-wise, it doesn't really mean much because it's only a couple thousand dollars.
Right.
I don't mean it's only a couple thousand.
Yeah, so we went from.
Every penny saved is a penny saved.
Yeah, we went with two of us that had degrees to, we got one that just got his bachelor's degree, so that increased. Two or three guys turned in their 30 credits, and a couple of guys turned in their.
But the line item itself is only, is only 4250, so it's not a huge number.
Right.
It just looks at percentage ones. All right, thank you.
And the only non-contractional item I went up on was on IT. Since we were so behind in technology, I was able to get a couple of computer programs to enhance the department greatly. And the user fees was one is 1350 a year, and the other one's 650 a year. And just to keep the growing of technology was the reason I added just $2,000, that line item. The rest of the budget, I went over and was able to keep within every other line item.
Right. All right. And that's it for any?
That's all the other changes, yep. Everything else stayed the same.
Well, most of this is up because of.
It's all contractual stuff, yep.
Contractual stuff.
Like I said, the only one non-contractional line item, line item I went up on was the computer IT budget. That was it.
I think whenever those new department head, you're going to see some changes for equipment that they feel they've always needed, or some adjustments, so it's acceptable and within reason. Okay, is there any further questions on that, Elton?
No.
Okay. Motion to accept the Fire Department budget as presented?
I'm moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I want to take just a moment and recognize two members of our audience. Tonight, we have two official candidates for my position are in the room. So I would like to welcome Denise Reyes and Deborah. Deborah, how do you say your last name?
Lancaster.
Lancaster, okay.
Just like we're.
Yeah, okay. Deborah Lancaster, both official candidates, and I thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. To me, it's very important that you attend meetings and get to see what's going on before you jump into the seat, so whoever the winner is, good luck to both of you, but I appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much, Jerry, and please, vote Ray's.
Deborah?
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Conservation Commission, are you presenting these, David?
I am not. I can see if John's already here.
So we'll go, we'll skip over and come back. All right, Budget 1720, Agriculture Commission.
Yep, so I'll present these, Mr. Chairman. The Agricultural Commission is 1720. It's level funded, $600 year-over-year.
Okay.
Good.
Women's Crisis Center?
Yep, which is Budget 5260. They have requested 2750 in the past. This year, they're requesting 3,000, an increase of $250. Brockton Area ARC, Budget 5270. Their request is $250, which is level funded year-over-year. Budget 5280, Old Colony Hospice Care is, their request is level funded, $2,000, same as last year. And the last is Plymouth County Extension Services, Budget 6600. The level funding, it was $200 last year, the same request this year of $200.
David, the Plymouth County Services, I know it's minimal, I shouldn't even bother asking, but we just set a flat assessment each year, or is that just a contribution we make, or?
They actually, it's a formal request that they make in writing.
Okay. Elton, you have any questions?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve, 1720, 5260, 5270, 5280, and 6600 to the Finance Committee.
Moved.
I'll second. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointed Representative to the Capital Budget Committee.
Yep, so we will begin our capital budget process all in the next couple of weeks. A selectman representing the town is usually myself, the Town Treasurer, the Town Accountant, and a member of the Board of Selectmen. Anthony, Selectman Kinahan has requested to be placed onto the Capital Budget Committee. I know he's not here, but he has been, he has requested that the Board would vote for him to represent the Board.
Okay, I'll honor that request, and I'll make a motion for Anthony to be on that Capital Budget Committee.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Set annual town meeting date, June 4th, 2018.
Yep, so that is a date that we have targeted. It is the first Monday of June, and so the only item to be aware of is that we have not received final confirmation yet from the school, because again, it's school vacation. So I would ask you to take a vote to set the town meeting date on June 4th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the middle school, high school auditorium. Obviously, if that date does not work for the schools, because it's a conflict, then it will come back and we'll look at a different date. But we have touched base with everybody else, i.e. town moderator and town clerk, and everybody else is okay with that date.
I'll move the June 4th meeting.
Okay, I'll second. David, the only thing I ask is we try to see if we can do a little bit more, integrate a little more technology in the meeting. Every year, it's brought up, and we do have our beautiful new school. I know sometimes it's hard when the school personnel's not there to assist us with the technology in the new auditorium, but anything we can do to make it a little bit more user-friendly would be great.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have very good news for you.
Excellent. Should I move on this first and then come back?
I just want to let you know, three weeks ago, Tracy and myself, along with school officials, the town moderator and town clerk, we met at the school, and we're going to do everything we can to incorporate more technology going forward.
Great. We got a lot of pretty pictures and colored bars and, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve special town meeting warrant articles. We have them before us tonight. There are six. David, you want to go over them quickly?
Sure. So the first four, this is, this special town meeting was chiefly called by the Water Department. So the first four articles are all water-related articles. Number one is, is to be able to appropriate funds, so that way they can do upgrades to their Station One pump. Article two is to be able to build, to get additional software and some other hardware that they're going to need. Article three is that way they can do the flyover for the GIS. And Article four is that way they can upgrade in reference to their Badger metering system. Where the money is going to come from will be 100% from water surplus. So next meeting, you will be voting on actually whether you approve or recommend or do not recommend the articles. Tonight, you are just placing the warrant articles onto the special town meeting warrant, and so those are the four from the Water Department. Article five is National Grid had an issue with their poles up on Steppingstone Drive in North Elm Street in mid-fall. They had to increase the height of their poles from 35 feet to 45 feet. When they do that, they have to have all of the new lines replaced on the poles, and so that is Comcast, that's Verizon, that's anybody else who has lines on it, including obviously the town. We incurred about $6,600 worth of expense. I called National Grid with the hope that maybe somehow, because we're a municipality, that we wouldn't be charged, but we had no dice. It's actually in whatever regulation that they have with the state DPU, and every other city in town called and found the same answer. So I told the IT Department at that point, because it was early enough in the fiscal year, pay for it out of your budget. We had to get it done. So pay for it, and then whenever we had another town meeting, we would just transfer the funds from free cash. And then Article six is a piece of land just under four acres that went into foreclosure a handful of years ago. We are now ready to be able to sell off that property, and so we would sell the property through an RFP process. It includes a billboard on it as well. If you're driving up Route 24, that's the Copeland Toyota billboard on the right-hand side. And so this has already been vetted through our tax title attorney and also our town council. And so the only town meeting can authorize the disposition of property, so I'm asking to place that on the warrant as well.
David, I know it's a little premature on the billboard, and right now, it's just a traditional billboard, but if and when it becomes a, the modern billboard, that electronic billboard, I'd like to make sure that in the purchase and sales, we have a right to the community billboard, which has been very successful and loved by a lot of people in town for our community messages, and we'd like to incorporate it into that.
I will.
I have a motion to accept for review and placement on the, I'm sorry, for placement on the warrant. At the next meeting, we'll assign them and vote on endorsing or not.
I'm moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Can you see if John Delano's across the hall? Thank you, Chief. Award contract to Ron Bethany of New England Brass Refinishing for memorial plaques.
Yep, so at our special town meeting in October, we sought funds from the town. It was about $12,200, because that was our quote at the time. And the hope is, is to be able to refinish all of our plaques here at the town hall on the stone in front of the building, along with all of them at War Memorial Park as well. We'd actually hoped to secure a grant. I didn't want to spend the $12,000 if we had an opportunity to get matching funds from the state, so we've spent the last couple of months trying to secure matching funds. That program didn't become available. They have now made it available next year. I didn't want to wait another 12 months, especially since we may not get the funds again. So with that said, we did go out to bid. We solicited four quotes. The only quote that came back still was Mr. Bethany, so that's the one that we're going to go with. And so I would just ask the Board to award that to New England Brass Refinishing.
There's also, there's a number, a number of other plaques we could still apply for in the future, if that money is available in the next fiscal year.
That's a specialty anyhow. There's not too many people do that, you know?
It's hard to get a bid, and it does great work. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve Building Inspector's Contract Amendment.
Yep, so there's an amendment before you in reference to the Building Inspector. He's, and so it's in reference to, he was looking to be able to roll over vacation in accordance with the town bylaws. It's in everybody else's contract. It's, it should be approved. There was just some type of an oversight on the previous template.
So moved.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Allegra quote? Tracy?
Sure. So we requested our printer for the Finance Committee annual report and for the annual town report for quotations, which he provided. They are, the Finance Committee is the same as last year. The annual report went up by about $300, but it's consistent pricing. It's just we had more pages last year, so we based it off of that.
I know in the past, we'd try to be very, very frugal on that, but it's truly the one existing document that documents the history of the town for that year, and we kind of told department heads, look, okay, we're not going to go that avenue. We want to make sure people know what you did, so that's to be expected. Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
Moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Delano, how are you today?
Good.
Come on forward. You're up.
Absolutely. Wow.
John's presenting two budgets tonight, Conservation and Open Space. We'll start off with 1710, Conservation.
Good evening, and I'd like to start off in saying that we've level funded the budget except for contractual salaries for both the agent and the clerical staff. The increase in the agent's salary is two-and-a-half percent higher than the hourly rate that I was getting the previous year, or under the, this fiscal year.
John, I think we're looking back over the years involving the town. Your department's come a long way. Probably the biggest improvement and change from what we once had there, so I want to thank you and your department for that. Actually, both budgets you presented today have been spectacular turnarounds since you've joined us, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
As have been both of us.
Thank you.
We certainly recognize you. You're important in there, and it's been great.
Elton, you have any questions on the Conservation budget?
No, I have none.
Moving on to Open Space, 1715. I think you already told us, there's no changes.
No, they're, that's level funded. There's no salaries or anything in that one, so it's the same as last year, fiscal year's budget.
Okay. Motion approved?
Moved.
And that's for both budgets, 1710, 750. Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz, do you want to come up?
Joe.
John, we had bypassed on the agenda the request for the transfer from the, transfer of funding for the Board of Health for the wastewater treatment facility. I understand we had some issues that you guys took care of and needs to be paid. If you want to give us a quick lowdown on that?
I will give you a quick synopsis for what happened. The system that we, that you're discussing is, it's at the Howard School, which pretty much takes all the effluent from all the other buildings in that part of town. It's 10 years old. So we had some issues with the floats, the alarm panel alerting the neighbors at night. It wasn't pretty. So we contracted with the company, and they went and they replaced one of the check valves on the pumps, and then we noticed that the check, the floats were 10 years old. They get waterlogged and whatever, so they somewhat, they're compromised in terms of quality and effectiveness, so we changed them. And I think the total bill for that was 17, it was 565 for, to do the initial repair of the, replacing check valve supervisor. Art and I were out there on Sundays and Saturdays and trying to figure out this mess, and he realized that it was something to do with the pump, sure it's spinning around. But anyways, the issue has been corrected.
Right.
We have a new check valve on one of the pumps, new floats, so hopefully, we can get a few more years out of it. But I think probably next year or so, I might want to look into changing some of those pumps. Because like I said, it handles.
The Howard School, Senior Center, Library, Police Station, Fire Station.
Everything, yeah. Goes to the tank at Howard School, and then from there, it pumps it up to our soil absorption system at the, well, where the soccer field is.
Right.
So I mean, for the investment that we put, that we put into it 10 years or so ago, I mean, we've got a great return on it so far.
Motion to approve the request for transfer?
It's no move.
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now.
Now the budget?
First one is waste treatment facilities, 1950.
Let's see, wastewater. All right, so fiscal 18 was 3,600, and all of that money goes to our engineer, our review engineer, which, he's also our review engineer for the Board of Health. Art, as we all know, Art Cabral, great man, great, very knowledgeable in terms of filing up the reports that are needed to submit to the state. So we're asking for level funded for that, but we're also, where there's been some issues with the schools not maybe properly pumping the full amount because of what's in the tank and what's in the pump chamber, or vice versa. So we're going to be taking that line item from their budget and move it into our wastewater. So essentially, that's just the same amount of money that comes out of their budget to wash.
That's what I was actually going to ask, if you guys oversee their systems also.
Well, now we do. I mean, we, you know, we've got, we get a company that comes in the first of the fiscal year, and they pump everything down, but occasionally, something happens where they'll pump out a pump chamber, and then the pump becomes airbound. So then we have to deal with that. So it's just like, we'll have our health agent be around when things are being pumped. So we don't have any issues with the pump chambers.
All right.
And like I said, Art takes care of the, the system that we have at the Rose L and the system that we have on, at the Howard soccer field.
Art's been a great, great use to the, to the town.
Very knowledgeable, very, very huge asset to the town.
Any questions in 1950, Eldon?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to 5110, Board of Health.
Here we go.
John, all we ask you really to do is go over any major increases or decreases with an explanation and...
That's good, because that's all, we've got three increases. One is clerical salaries, that's two and a half percent contractual. And then we, we feel that our health agent is below C-level in terms of the paper, in the amount of money that he makes. In comparison, comparing to the other towns, and I think you might have a copy of the analysis that we have with the surrounding towns, these are, these are, I think the number is 60,000 right now. And the closest town that resembles us is Avon, and they're at 70. Casper's with, been with us for, I don't know, 12 or 14 years, and needless to say, he's had other offers to pick up and move. I think he's been an asset to the town. As you know, Jerry, you, you know what he does. I mean, I think you hired, hired him years ago.
He hired him, he was, he was very new.
Yeah.
And he was highly recommended.
He does perk tests, he reviews perk tests, he does, you know, he checks all the convenience stores, all the restaurants. He's very thorough in terms of his reports, and I think he's well worth the additional money. And I, I'll tell you, I'd hate to lose him, because if we lose him, we would have to advertise obviously something that's going to be much greater than the 60.
I will say, John, I hear time and time again, I just, I'm sure you do, people, restaurants in town, what a great inspector he is. He's not easy, but he always gives recommendations. He's not out there to, to, you know, make people look bad. He always comes up with recommendations, says, hey, let's take care of this, and...
Right. That's how he is.
I love hearing it.
He's very fair.
Yep.
I mean, if something needs to be corrected, he will tell, whatever, this needs to be corrected, and he will be back.
Yep.
And they do obviously take care of the issues.
Well deserved.
So that's, that's the, the big, one of the big increases that we're going for. And the second one is nursing services. Right now, we have a nurse that we, that she, I guess she contracts with us. So she's five hours a week, 52 weeks a year, and she spends those five hours a week at the Council on Aging, blood pressure checks and things of that nature. It seems like the feedback that we're getting from the Council on Aging is that they want her, and we want her, to be more available to the townspeople. So for instance, if a towns person has, has an illness, she can follow up. If someone is home, you know, home alone, and they really don't have much of a family, she'll, can follow up with a friend addition. So essentially, we want to double her, her time allotted with us.
It's not on here in the budget for that, though?
Um, I think it's up to 90.
Under nursing services, it's not. It's 9,495.
Well, it would have been...
Which is what was presented last year.
Um, I think it was 70.
Is that right, David? Yeah, I think the difference is they never spent the full 9,400 in the past, and, and this...
So the contract must have been for, well, under, under four grand, so you're going to be doubling that.
Actually, the contract was, well, it's 150, 150 a week times 52 weeks, so it's like seven grand is what the contract was, so we'd be pretty much doubling that. Uh, let's see. See, that's why I should have been here at eight o'clock. I would have been a little bit healthier with these numbers.
Well, I mean...
Well, I don't know what the numbers are, but the thing is, is that we want to double her, double her hours, and that way she can spend more time at the Council on Aging. She can spend some time going to...
Okay, you know what, it's shown on a separate sheet, that you want to increase it by eight. It's not shown on the budget.
Yeah.
But on page four of the budget, Eldon, it's showing that that's a requested increase of $8,005.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's down.
Yeah, it's just, the increase is separated because it's not contractual or, all right, great.
So it's pretty much doubling her hours, it's, the, the rate is the same. I mean, for what we, I'll pay per hourly rate, it's a, it's a, it's a benefit to the town, and it's definitely, I mean, she's well received and well liked at, at the Council on Aging. We want to send her to Life Care Center, and like I said, maybe go some home, through some homes throughout the town, just for an additional five hours a week. We're not looking at any huge increase. Now, if you remember, a few years ago, we used to have partners, healthcare.
Partners and BNA.
And back then, we, I think we had a budget of about 12 grand. So if you were to adjust that with inflation, it would probably be up to be 15, 16,000 now, which is what this pretty much would bring us close to. So, and, and we have better hands-on care, better hands-on services, and it's just a win-win situation for the town.
Motion to approve the budget, fast pass.
Moved.
Pass on to the Finance Committee, and that's for the two budgets.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Hey, John. Thanks, Eldon.
I think that is our final budget for the night?
It is.
All right, moving back on course. Approved Town Administrator's Contract Amendment?
Yep, so we were in negotiations last meeting, and I have before you a new three-year contract for your approval.
Motion approved?
I'm moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Communication reports and from committees, commissions, and town officials. We have none official. I will ask for a follow-up maybe at the next meeting, if we've done any communicating with Verizon or any other internet and cable providers.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have anything to add? I'm not putting you on the spot, but if you're here, if you're...
Nothing to add. We did talk about our last cable advisory board meeting, two months ago. As far as my board's view on it is, very unlikely, or highly unlikely, that another company like Verizon would come to the town, just because they'd be putting in a lot of work, laying down the wires for very little return from the customers as far as...
Any research on why? I'm going to tell you, I mean, that's every newspaper article you read, it's telling you exactly the same thing. They're looking for a big bang for their buck, and they're not going out to the suburbs. They didn't, they only wanted to do the very wealthy areas of Boston, and so there's very little expansion, if any, to that program, but at the request of the residents, we'll reach out and see if they, they'd be willing, and it just been, came up with some names and some others that are a possible competitor in town, so, very good.
We certainly will reach out.
All right, and we don't need an update on that, we, we got it right there. A few years back, I had made a proposal that we name a street in town after Eldon, who was the longest-serving selectman, and continues to serve today, outliving me. So congratulate on that, Eldon. But I do think as my 12-year service as selectman comes to an end, I've had a lot of time to reflect on my service, but only that, also that of other selectmen. And one outstanding former selectman that I think really deserves recognition is Judy Kinney. Judy looked beyond just budgets and numbers. Judy looked at people and places, and came up with some very creative ways to enhance our, our, our community, and not only make it affordable, but also make it a, a pretty place to live. And I would like to ask the town administrator that if and when any developments come in town, we try to do a cooperative effort where we could name a street in any new development, Judy Kinney Avenue, or probably Judy Kinney Way in that subdivision, and I'd like to do that as a way to recognize Judy for her outstanding service. And I want to do it now, when she can appreciate being appreciated for all she did back in her day.
Yep, so noted.
So I will make that a motion.
Yeah, and I'll second. I served with her, and I know what this is all about, and I certainly deserve it.
I didn't have the honor of serving with her, but the seat I occupy was hers, and then after that, Vic Senior. We do the Vic Senior Civic Award, we have Eldon Marrow Way, we have McDonald Brown Meeting Room, so this is just one more way to recognize somebody, and I think it's well deserved. And again, looking back on my years of service, I think Judy was a big influence, and she did some spectacular things in town, including our gazebo. I think a lot of people called out the Judy gazebo, so if you would take care of that first, they would be great, and...
Will do.
Very good. Hope a comment period? Anybody? This is not a campaign pitch?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Absolutely not. I just have a question regarding the funds we use for the preservation of historic records, and I only had an opportunity to look at one department. And my question is, we're spending thousands of dollars, I mean, just for some of these records, it was, I think, two years' worth of records was $1,350 to preserve them, but there was no electronic storage added on to that. So for an extra $175, we could have had those same records also stored electronically on 35-millimeter or scanned, and I'm wondering if that's a practice other departments should look into, because this, just this one project, Gary, for the assessor's office, is going to cost $52,000, and I think that only brings us up to the year 1938. Plus, the current practice is to still maintain the documents on paper and in books. There's no electronic imaging of it, of it. So 10 years from now, we'll be restoring those records. So I'm just thinking, it might be wise to look into some electronic storage.
We haven't done any preservation. The only two people that have done it that I know of, I know Kitty Dury did some, it was electronic, but that was just done on her own. But the, the two elected boards that did it, or are doing it, is the town clerk. I thought the town clerk said everything was electronic also, that it was on file electronically, because everything was scanned when they were preserving it.
And not for, not for the assessors. I, I asked them about it tonight, because I wasn't sure on the invoices I received, because it said no, but when I asked them, they said they opted not to do any electronic storage. And, and like I said, the same practice continues, where they're taking the records, from what I understand, scanning them, and then having them printed into paper that would fit into the books. So I was just wondering if...
Definitely, look in, look into it. I mean, that's, you know, again, they're on a self-elected board that put that as their own article, so you can vote against it, or vote in favor of it, or make amendments when they're, at the time, because that money all came from CPA, which is, you know, it's approved at town meeting.
Right.
I agree with you. It should be, should be available electronically, and then made available to the public to, to look at and archive. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jerry?
Yes, Neil.
First of all, congratulations, 12 years, a long time. It goes by fast.
Thank you, sir. It sure does.
So I'm, it's my 43 years, and I work, I got two things, a PowerPoint. Are we ever going to go to PowerPoint at town meeting?
You missed it. You came in a little bit late, and we've already said...
I was late, bud.
And we said that's in the works. In fact, the administrator, assistant administrator, school officials, and moderator had a meeting, and it's in the works for our next annual town meeting.
All right, thank you. Also...
And by the way, I'll say, that was to your encouragement, and I, I know you keep bringing it up at town meeting, so it's, hopefully it'll be done, for everyone's benefit.
One other thing, Vic Kruger. I know, I read the paper around, it's going to come in December. His lawsuit with the town, I remember when he ran for office, he said, felt he, he was owed money in his contract. And it was, and you, I don't know who the, your litigator, they went to court, and he said, at the time, if I win this case, I'm, when he was asked a question when he was running, he's, the question was, are you suing the town? He responded, I'm suing it because of my contract says he felt he was owed money. And then he said, it's going to be yes or no. If I win, I'm taking the money, and if I lose it, it's over. Now, I heard he won it, the judge ruled in his favor, or whoever, wherever it went, what brought, then it's being appealed. How much is the cost for the lawyer? How much is he looking for? And what are we going to be paying now, if he wins again?
Well, there's still an appeal, so I don't know how much we can say, but I'll let David speak on that. Again, I don't know how far we are in it, you know, David meets on a daily basis with councils, so David, you can answer what you can answer across the town, you know, we can only talk about what we can talk about in public without sacrificing the town's position.
Yep. So, obviously, this off the top of my head, we've probably spent about $20,000 to date on legal fees.
May I just interject one second?
Sure.
How much is he looking for on his contract?
$8,000.
$8,000, now we're up to $20,000 on legal fees.
Yes.
Is that before it was appealed, or is it right up to what, today, from the start to today?
I'd say the $20,000 is up to about a month ago. So obviously, a couple of...
Escalate.
Sure, because under the appeal, there'll be, there'll be more attorney's fees. So, if I may...
Yep.
The problem is this, we have a culture in town of, of paying out sick time buyback. We have always paid it one way for decades.
Can I just say, don't talk to me like I'm stupid. I've been in this town for a long time. I've been at the U town meetings many, many times. We talked about sick time, so, and you're a new guy, so when you say "we," try to just say what the town has been doing.
So I will do that, but to be, to be honest with you, Neil, one of the things that I attempt to do in these meetings is I'm not just speaking to you, I'm also speaking to everybody on camera. So I want to make sure that everybody who watches this totally understands what I'm saying, because you're going to have an opportunity to ask me questions if I'm not clear, but they won't. So that's why I'm, I'm saying it this way. So with that said, the town has always had a history of paying sick time buyback at time of retirement. We've always done it one way. In Rick's contract, he has a line that most of us, including legal counsel agrees, is ambiguous at best. And he is interpreting it one way, and we have interpreted it another way. Our concern from a town standpoint was not the $8,000 that we potentially would be paying to Rick. It was also the fact that we don't want to open the door where we have other people in town start to think that they would be subject to it as well, because his contract is based on the collective bargaining agreement, which is based on the town bylaws. So if we do it for one, and we end up having to do it for others, it would end up costing the town potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. And at least one other employee has that specific language in her contract as well. So we said, and the town has a history of this, is that as people walk out the door, is that they threaten a lawsuit, we end up cutting them a check, and we all feel good about it. And I said to the board, and the board agreed, because we have legal counsel backing, we are not going to continue our culture that we're going to allow people with an interpretation of their contract, in our opinion, attempt to get additional money than anybody else has ever received. We just didn't think that was fair. And so, yes, we knew we were going to cost more than $8,000, or expend more than $8,000 in legal fees, but it wasn't this case. It's not specific to Rick, is to make sure that we do not have to fight this again in the future. Now, one item of note that you're probably not aware, is that we always felt that this could not be a wage complaint. There is a statute that refers to a wage complaint, which means that if you are unfairly, if you are unfairly paid, and you win, you are subject to trouble damages, and you are also subject to all attorney's fees. So that $8,000, when he won at the district, at the district level, was, came to almost $50,000. So that obviously doesn't make a lot of sense. However, since...
It's fifty thousand plus the lawyer's fee.
Nope, that's, that's all, that, that's an all encompass.
I mean, for the town, the town's...
Oh, yes.
Right.
That is correct.
So you're up to probably $75,000.
Since then, however, the Supreme Judicial Court looked at this exact same issue in a different case that we were watching. It's identical, and ruled against the employee. That order will now be vacated at the appeals court. So had this board not appealed, and cut a check for $50,000, and then the Supreme Judicial Court came out and did the ruling that it did, we would have looked like fools, because we would have spent 50 grand when we didn't need to. Now that means Mr. Kruger cannot win more than $8,000, no matter what, going forward on appeal. And he has spent about $25,000 as well. So he is going to have to make a decision whether he wants to continue fighting as well.
On that note, when you say, is it a state, states, am I in order, Jerry?
Yeah, yeah.
If state Supreme Court, I did it go to the Supreme Court?
Yep. So it is the state judicial Supreme Court?
So it's the state, and the state matters.
So it's the highest court in Massachusetts?
That is correct.
The only court that could take it upon appeal would be the US Supreme Court, but you would have to rule, they would have to find that there was a constitutional violation, not a misinterpretation of a contract, which means it will not go to appeal at the United States Supreme Court.
Thing I'm saying, it's taxpayers' money.
Yep.
How many other people that will go down this road? I didn't, what he spent on it for 8,000, I don't know what what the backing is, I would have walked away. I would have cut him a check, then I would have tried to negotiate differently, but when you sit there and you spend a taxpayer's money and you appealed it, I think the taxpayer should have a right to decide. My opinion that they decide if they should continue, because a lawyer's cost, he's on a meter and he's running it. He don't have a set fee. Like, if you get a DUI or something like that, you give me 10 grand, I'll do the best I can for you. This here is going to keep going and going. Now, I'm saying for 8,000, now somebody else can do the same thing, somebody else can do the same thing until the state Supreme, then it can go, then it can be appealed.
Sure.
So we are costing this town a lot of money, not you, but I think we, it's a taxpayer's money, and that's another reason I'm running, because the money that comes out of this hall, out of this town hall, but that thing here, if you appealed it, should have went before the taxpayer, see what they want to do.
So obviously, this is the part I can't get into further detail, but I can verifiably tell you, we made multiple overtures in an attempt to settle it through the process. We did not settle. Now, we can say that we weren't flexible enough, and we could say that Mr. Kruger wasn't flexible enough, because it always takes two, but I can tell you that not only was settlement offers discussed, we actually sat in a formal mediation at District Court in Brockton, all parties, and we made an attempt. Unfortunately, attempts failed, so we didn't make the attempt.
Attempt to give the 8,000 and walk away, or less than 8,000?
I I I I can't tell you what the numbers are.
It had to be less than eight, he's only looking for 8,000.
We're going to wrap this up, but I'm going to say if we gave out 8,000 to everyone that told us we owe them 8,000, you'd be sitting here going, why'd you give this? That's not what his contract said. The town's put in a position, we have to make a decision. Sometimes it's very hard to stand up for what's right. When the insurance companies come to you, this is a generic statement, when the insurance companies come to you and say, hey, we want to settle, we want to give this person 40,000, and we say, wait a minute, we're right, we don't want to give them a dime. The insurance company closes their books, they said, you know what, then you take the case, because we're done. Now you start over at zero with your lawyers, and you start the whole case over. So it's very hard to make a decision, are we going to spend taxpayers' dollars to appeal something, or are we just going to pay out because it's easier? And sometimes we win, sometimes we lose, but you know what, sometimes you got to do the right thing.
Jerry, I sat on board, I sat on board with 400 million, sat on pension boards, I negotiated contracts, I dealt with insurance companies, I dealt with work.
So you know how it works.
I do know how it works.
Yep, and I would be appalled if I found out the board just pays out 8,000 when they didn't think that we owed it.
I'd pay 8,000, try to find a way to settle the other cases without going that way, instead of paying 50,000.
That's how we do it every time, we always try to find.
Well, it's taxpayers' money, just spend as you will.
Then we're wrapping it up, right, Denise?
It's a simple question, David. The the case that was just ruled on, can that be appealed to? I'm not talking the Kruger case, I'm talking about the one that the case lawyers that you were lying on.
Yep, so it's MUI versus Massport Authority, and again, as I stated, the only appeal at this point would be to the United States Supreme Court.
Oh, for that case?
Correct. Yeah, that's the highest court in Massachusetts. So unless they can find that on grounds of lack of violating the Constitution, it's not going to be taken under appeal, that case dies, and I will tell you, just because I want to be crystal clear about this, is that we have had conversations with Mr. Kruger's attorney, Mr. Kruger's attorney has reviewed that case, and Mr. Kruger's attorney acknowledges the fact that he is no longer subject to troubled damages or attorney's fees on the sick time buyback, that that now is closed, that case is crystal clear, and 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 so.
Which, by the way, is what our council's been telling us all along.
Correct.
They can't go for this, they can't go for this, and they told us all along, but the court ruled differently, and only find out the court was wrong anyways.
But this case was running concurrent with Kruger, so it was.
But it was, but but see, the law had already been determined, it just wasn't questioned. So this court said, the law is very clear, you can't sue for that, it's done. So that's, you know, and that's what we were going on based on council's advice, and now it's been tried and true, so. Okay, moving on. Thank you. David, Town Administrator's Report.
So as you know, as part of the policy of the Board of Selectmen, whenever they want to use town, a entity wants to use town roads, I already signed off on it, it's a 16th Annual Road Race at Memorial Day. On Memorial Day, it runs from Howard Street up to Spring Street and Crescent Street, again, just an FYI to the board per the policy of the Board of Selectmen.
And the Police Department, Fire Department's on board with that?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
And then the second is, is that the board has discussed creating a gift account for[1706.86]